Okay.
All right, it is three oh one, so we'll officially call this meeting to order. And we'll do a roll call, number sessions, and go over the tables, so you can see everybody that is here. So I'll start, I'm Cardi Hoover, I'm Director of District One.
Uh, Dr. Consey, who's a Superintendent of Taquilla School District.
Dave Dawson, uh, School District Y. Eric Baran, who's our Director and with our divisions.
And Scott Whitbeck, Chief Academic Officer.
Naomi Burdo, Chief, our Director of Communications and Community Management.
Uh, Amy Plum, CEO.
Kate Vola, Sheever, Director, District Two.
Thank you, um, and thanks for those that had your phone lines, and we're really gonna discuss the show eventually. Uh, we'll keep going, um, all right, so welcome to our guests that are joining online. Um, and for those that may be listening to this meeting after the fact. Um, all right, so, uh, you have to approve our agenda for Saturday.
Certainly.
Sorry.
All in favor?
All right.
All right, so we have one, uh, oh, actually, it's a public comment first, um, so there's no one here in person. Uh, I know that we did not receive any written public comment prior to the move. Um, so if there's anyone online that would like to offer a public comment, um, you can use that raise hand function. Um, we should be able, we're going to try to detect your name in the chat. Uh, so just a second, uh, one of those two books that I'm not willing to offer anything. All right, this is, um, uh, because this is a work session, we wanted to have an opportunity for public comment, but there is just one. Um, whereas in most of our regular meetings, there's an opportunity at the end. Uh, but if something does come up in our conversation, uh, when you have thought or comment, questions, um, uh, definitely send those to us via email. Um, or of course, uh, attending the regular meeting. Plus, we have one item, uh, for our work session this afternoon, um, and that is really looking at the plan, um, kind of the mitigation plans for, um, the staffing updates, or the staffing impacts primarily, um, looking into the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Um, so this is something that the board, you know, has been asking for a while to really come see, really what is, what are the, what are the impacts? And then what are the monetary, um, um, you know, dollars that are connected to those impacts? Um, and then, you know, they have due to, you know, just variety of the process, um, and the rollout of the process, we needed to wait, um, until much of that was done. Um, and so kind of our place where this can be a little bit more, um, um, public and available, so if you'd like to see services for that. So, um, without a question to you, um, Dr. Consey, I think it's time.
Great. Um, good afternoon, everyone, uh, first off, I want to thank all of the participants uh, in the recent community forums we held, one in May and one in June. Uh, we had a large number of staff and we had some families, uh, community members in attendance. And, uh, the focus was on the budget. Uh, we recorded that, um, these community forums, and we're gonna be working to put those on our website. Um, so people can go in real time and see the engagement that we had. And, um, also there'll be FAQs as well, so as part of our continued, uh, education and engagement around the budget. Um, I just wanna preface this with saying that, um, this has been, um, a long time in coming. We've been, uh, starting this work in September. Uh, we've been trying to learn and educate community along the way, uh, every step of the way. And, um, I think even though you share with people, uh, the, the gravity of the situation and the need to really think about, uh, potential impacts on community. Um, I will say May was, uh, very challenging in that, uh, those impacts were felt really directly. So I, uh, I will say a couple of things around that. Uh, one is that, um, I just wanna acknowledge that there is a lot of people still, um, really wondering, like, where they're gonna end up and be, and a lot of uncertainty for people. And just a reminder that none of these cuts are related to merit, but I do recognize that, you know, it doesn't feel that way, right? So there's a human toll in this work, and then I also will share that we are still in the process. Uh, and we're still going through that process still with some of our groups. Uh, we're not finished, and we have a few more weeks, uh, until we're sort of, uh, will be finished. Um, and then we will spend time analyzing where we are. Um, so that's, I wanna just acknowledge that on the human level for folks. And I, um, and I appreciate the people who reached out to me, who've come to public comment. I've gone to their buildings to meet with them and talk with them and hear ideas and thoughts, and so, and I will continue to do that. So I just wanted to share that, number one. The other thing I wanna add is that, uh, I will stop in the middle of this presentation a couple of times for questions. I know there's a lot of questions, so I will, I will do a presentation, then I'll pause. I'll try to do at least two or three pauses for the board, um, so that they can ask questions along the way, so we can clarify information. And then I've asked, um, CFO Amy Plummy, and I've asked Executive Director of Human Resources Erin Baran to answer the technical questions, if there's specific technical questions from Human Resources or budgeting items. So I just wanna let people know that they will be joining me in answering questions, so. Um, and, uh, again, so now I will begin, so next slide.
Thank, one comment, you talked about the community meetings, and so one of the ideas that came out of the community meetings, one of the parents was, you know, can we develop some kind of letter that parents and community members, because, send to the legislature? Because we know that one of the big issues is that we're not getting enough money from the legislature for a whole variety of reasons, which are pretty complicated if you haven't studied it. And so apparently, there's just, can you give us some, some ideas about what it is specifically? And so I developed a letter, which was basically the same, similar letter to what, you know, the board and, and Dr. Consey have sent to our legislature exactly at the end of December before the meeting, and kind of formatted that, and so that's available. I'm not sure exactly how we're gonna, okay.
No, we've already sent it to the, you know, I've already sent it to communication, and then we're sending a family letter. So we're gonna attach it to the family letter that we send out to everybody.
So you don't have that community member is maybe listening, know that that's, that's available, and if you have any questions. It's, it's pretty, um, technical at one level, because that's the way the funding system works. And so if anybody has questions, I'm happy to answer any questions in detail on that. And, you know, uh, sometimes it can, um, you can send those letters to the legislators, you know, one letter with a bunch of signatures on them. You can send them individually, you can tailor, sometimes, sometimes legislators get a whole bunch of letters, the same thing. They just, okay, well, that's just kinda somebody's telling you to do that. Uh, but if, if you, if you're interested in tailoring, or whatever, you know, open to any, any, any help on any of that stuff. So, anyway, that was a great idea.
Yeah, yeah, and there was that great idea about a great committee, so those are all things for entertaining. So, um, we're gonna continue to talk through that, and we have our coffee chats in the summer. But there's a lot of things that are gonna be in the works, this isn't over. And then last thing I will say to everybody too, is just a reminder that, um, I'll preface this, and I'm being really deliberate. So I just wanna make sure that we're, um, this is reported, I know this, people will be having a lot of questions. Um, but, uh, we will, this is for the twenty-four, twenty-five, uh, school year that I'm presenting information on. But just a reminder, um, we also have been given, um, the task that we have to continue to raise our endowment balance, right? And so that, uh, our percentages to four percent and higher, so, um, hopefully, uh, we'll have more attrition. We can work on some things, and it's not as much, but there will still be some impacts continuing in the years to come. So I just wanna remind everybody, I think we forget that, we've been through a really tough spring, um, that we wanna make sure that we continue to analyze all the impacts. Uh, that's one thing, to analyze the impacts, uh, make decisions, and we have to reverse on some of them based on enrollment numbers, and we do recall processes. Uh, and then finally, um, we see how we land in the fall, right? And that's the most important part, like, where are our members settling with our enrollment, um, our staff to student, uh, and then also we're enrolling this summer. So there'll be some implications from that as well. So I just wanna remind the community, those are big things that we're all thinking about moving forward. I, I've, I've said it lots over this, but I wanna let everyone remind everyone, so our goals are on high expectations and excellence for all engaged learners, relationships, and equity and empathy. Those have been the through lines, but we've been trying to make decisions around students' center decisions. And I do wanna say that I've heard feedback along the way, people like, well, it feels like it's a decision that are impacting kids. Well, I will say thirteen million, there, we're a small district, right? So, but we're trying to minimize that, but, and not eliminate as many things as we can, but there are gonna be impacts, we're referring it felt everywhere. So, but we have a whole strategic plan in the center of our decision making, and our students who are the most vulnerable in our system, and making sure that we are considering all of these things, so, um, next page, please. Um, one of the things we've been talking about, and we shared this very openly with our principals yesterday, our district administration team, and also our equity leads yesterday, um, after all the work that we've been doing this year, uh, with, uh, our, um, Dr. Roberts Ard and Dr. Canaus, who were our facilitators for, uh, equity inclusion and anti-racist actions. Um, we are, we have landed on six goals for the district specifically around this work. And so number one, we will continue to push this through line of naming and disrupting racist systems. Two, enforce anti-bias discipline. Three, bipolar, which is, um, which is, um, uh, making sure that we are representative of our bilingual, our indigenous, our people of color curriculum, represented curriculum, but a lot of people don't know what that means. And, and four, anti-racist leadership development. Five, student voice and engagement, um, ensuring that. And six, this is, uh, something we're continually reviewing, anti-racist policy review and advocacy. And we specifically talked about this in schools around the policies and procedures specifically at the school level as well. Not just the district level, but the school level, including, um, for example, grading practices or discipline and those types of things. So these are the six goals that we've landed as a district that we're gonna be really striving for and moving towards in terms of some of the work. Okay, next slide. Thank you. And then I wanna share with the community, when we talk about destabilization, um, you know, there, the, just the board has a stable, uh, stabiliz- stabilization resolution, or stabilization resolution, and when we were making decisions, the number one thing, of course, our, our goals on anti-racism and our strategic plan, but also our goals around, uh, what do we really wanna ensure we do? So one is make sure that we provide joyful and student-centered learning experiences. I'm not gonna read every bullet and every line, but I think that's really important, like, how do we ensure that our students? So one example of that, for example, is we knew we would have to make cuts to, um, camp, for example. But we know camp is a really important experience for our students. So we got a grant for over a hundred thousand dollars, so that we can provide fifth grade camp to every fifth grader in Taquilla School District next year, which will cover the entire cost of camp from transportation back then, and also the camp costs itself, because we believe. So those are the kind of things behind the scenes that we're trying to do, and that's just an example. A center of students' culture and identities within our decisions in alignment with our beliefs and values. Um, so that was one of the things that we talked about, is when we looked at staffing, prioritizing sta- staffing experiences with special education and experiences of, um, bilingual families, multilingual families and those types of things, and through the thinking about priorities. Um, abide by the parameters set forth by binding conditions from the state to be above zero percent and end your balance for twenty-four, twenty-five. Uh, it was a huge, uh, goal. We started planning in December, we started meeting and discussing, and, uh, we did not do this all at once. We actually met every, uh, week and every two weeks, uh, with, as a team, eventually to, uh, we looked at historical, we looked at, uh, we looked from a human resource perspective, from a fiscal perspective, and then we kept checking ourselves and kept asking ourselves, is this the right decision? Is this the right decision, going through this in an iterative process between December and April? Um, we were sitting down and just really analyzing every step of the way, but eventually to cut thirteen million plus dollars, um, we knew it would be impactful. Um, monitored closely the enrollment numbers and coordinated with our neighboring districts regarding our transfers of our community mentor students. So just letting the community know that we are well aware that our homeless population doubled this year. Um, it also increased enrollment, but it also additionally could increase needs for our students and our staff, which were significant. Um, while we're getting grants and those types of things to support that work. Um, it also gives us, um, challenges, because enrollment drives our funding, and because many of our students who are under a community mentor status are unhoused or living in hotels. And recently, we just, you read the articles in the news, um, some students lost the hotels and they're now living back in tents. So all of that transition impacts us, right? And once students find stable housing, they also might move to their closest district, which is also an impact on us. So what we're doing is our community mentor staff are coordinating with the enrollment offices in Highline School District and Kent School District and Renton School District. And then we're working very closely over the summer, and we're gonna be having meetings to talk through, and so that we can start monitoring our numbers. I also will say that enrollment itself, by having been over enrollment in the past, it is a really challenging, tricky science. Uh, it's not always precise, um, and, and we have an additional challenge of our son-seekers and really making sure. But I will say that we've made a commitment, that if our families choose to stay in Taquilla School District, we of course are happy to serve them. So I just wanna state that, that that is something that we're not communicating, that we don't wanna serve our students and families. We want to if they choose to remain here, so I just wanna state that for the record. And then the last thing is ensuring staffing is in alignment with enrollment and to work through that recall crisis process. And I'll just give an example of that, I met with, we had our equity leads, and one of our equity leads was one of the teachers that I had a appeal meeting with. And they informed me yesterday that they got the recall notice, and they're really excited, and we hugged, and we were really excited. And so they're gonna be back in their school community, and it's, it's a, it's a, it's a staff member of color, and it's a staff member that's bilingual. So I'm just sharing that, um, the, we're following the process and the process works, right? So just reassuring people that it's gonna be, you have to be patient, it's gonna take some time, that that was a really, that was a fun, um, that was, and then I say, can I hug you? And yes, you can hug me, and I was like, okay, so it was a really great moment for us. Yeah, you know, I listened to their story, I heard the appeals, we have some really amazing teachers, and, um, and we want them, we want as many of them to come back if we can. We've trained, we've trained, we've provided training and supports, and, and they're committed to our students. So I just wanna let you know that we're following our processes and we're ready to recall some people back into the community. So, but these are the, um, goals that we as a team have been working through, um, through this process. Before I move ahead, I just wanna do a process check and ask the board, or if there's any questions right now.
Just a comment, so I support the work session we had the other day, where we need to be more, um, rejoined, um, I mean, we used to be a big part of the people in the back of the, and stuff. And this seems to be a sign of that, and we're scratching, and that's seen as work to this real hard as far in terms of finding ways to re-see people.
Right. Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions, especially around any of the processes or anything? Okay, great, next one. So this is, we're gonna be excited, I'm gonna be excited, okay? So, and I said this this morning, you know, it was, it was funny, uh, we had a meeting this morning with the, the leadership team here, and, um, we were talking about, you know, what a rough month it was last month, and we did some reflection and work, but then I said to everybody, but we've got great things coming. Um, like, for example, and I'll share later on, like, we had a meeting yesterday with Special Olympics, and we're gonna get a grant to support Unified Sports in Taquilla School District for elementary kids. I mean, that's exciting, right? And so, and we've got the Orion Grant to support our immigrants and refugees, and so there's a lot, and we got the camp grant, and we're getting some great things. And so I'm really excited, right? So I'm excited about the work, and I'm excited because, uh, this is the planning time, right? To get excited for the work. So I just wanna share with the community and the district, uh, the push on some of our district-wide initiatives, um, that we're continuing. We're right now, um, going out to all of our schools and training right now all staffs on our focus on universal design for learning, um, as one of our goals. And, and so universal design for learning is our instructional framework that we're gonna be using in MTSF, to really build out MTSF systems in our system, and really making sure that our multilingual students, to the, to the maximum amount that we are as allowable, and our, um, our, um, special ed students and our five oh four students, or any students struggling, that they get more instruction. And so we're excited about that, so that is, we spent, the, the team spent a lot of time working with the law sub pilot to just get framing, and our instructional coaches ready, and our team is ready to launch that work in the fall, and we're out in school. So that's work that's, we're starting, uh, at a school level, so I'm really excited about that. Curriculum, uh, we're working on embedding, uh, since time immemorial into all of our professional development work, because I've said it, and I know we have some classrooms that are doing STI work, but it's a state mandate that we do since time immemorial. So I felt like if we're gonna do land acknowledgement, we need to do the curriculum that's mandated by the state. So that's work that our instructional coaches are also working on, and then the board adopted the K five already mathematics curriculum, which will be implemented this year for mathematics, the middle school lab aids curriculum implementation. We're gonna be launching, uh, middle school CTE courses and honors for all in high school language art. So we've got some amazing things happening, uh, for our community that we're launching, uh, in the year. So I just wanna share that this is the work that we're building out, and that we're gonna be implementing for the year. And I'm, I'm sorry by some people, but it does make me really happy. And then, uh, assessment, um, street data framework will be the assessment framework that we're using, really pushing ourselves. What does that mean to, when, you know, that street data, the, the satellite data, all of those pieces? That's work that will be led by, uh, Scott Whitbeck, I'm gonna be at his office. Um, we're gonna continue our partnership with Belon Partners, not the full scale that we have before, but we have some schools that didn't take full advantage, so they're gonna be prioritizing those two schools, the two schools in particular, and that we're gonna continue professional development and continue to build our, uh, our disciplinary practices. And then, um, and I will add to that, we're actually have a work that we're doing with the Comfada Network around distorted practices that'll be launching in the fall, I mean, it's got that grant, we've pre-did sound, we just found out. And so they're gonna be doing that work, and we're gonna train all, I would just share with the equity leads, and our social workers will be, uh, the leaders on that in our buildings, which is directly aligned to the UDL work, it's directly aligned to Belon Partner, it's all, all of this is interconnected. And then the foreign after-school, um, Boys and Girls Club and City of Taquilla Parks and Recreation Club. So it's the work that we're gonna be launching for before and after-school, um, in replacement of some of the, um, some of the other after-school programming that we've had in the past. So these are the things that the district admin and with our co-stars and instructional, um, coaches, that we've been working on all this year to set the foundation for implementation to move forward in our schools. So, uh, I'm really excited about it, but it's a lot of work. So this will be work that will be monitored for the next two to three years, uh, of, of implementation, but everyone's on board and we're ready to go. Any questions about this?
Congratulations to the, so the Science and Research G grant, let people know there is, like, for this year statewide, there is two hundred fifty thousand dollars available. This district got a hundred eighty thousand of it, so that's really good work by, by all our, um, all the folks that worked on that, on that grant. There's gonna be another seventy fifty thousand available statewide next year, so we'll see how that, how that goes. Um, the other thing I just wanted to comment on was this, uh, new math curriculum for K five. So I've been here long enough that, you know, standards over time change, and whenever the standards change at the state level, it always takes the system a while to kind of crank through and get the curriculum right and the teaching right, and then the students start performing. And the last time, you know, we had a curriculum change, we brought them into curriculum, and immediately the math scores started going up, and I've got the history of that. Recently, we had the Common Core State Standard came into place, and in our, our curriculum was not in total alignment with that, so we're putting it, you know, in to get aligned with that. So I'm fully expecting that, you know, our elementary math scores will start going up, which is one of the key, a lot of students, um, not just in our system, but system-wide struggle with math. And, you know, I've been a big opponent of, you know, you need to get math into the students' heads in the elementary level, that they feel good about it. And so this is gonna be, I think, a key, um, item as we start building math all the way up through the system, so, anyway, good job by everybody.
Anybody else got a comment or thought?
Yeah.
I'm just on the grant, it's, um, the representative of work was, was quite hopeful that we could align share of it, we definitely, I just wanna, uh, praise him and all the other people who managed to pull that thing together, and maybe it'll be a little more specific for the kinds of things we had.
And we have plans for the twenty-four, twenty-five. I was just letting you know, and we're just talking about that this morning, so we have plans for all of that. Anything else, I just make sure the board has a moment to comment or question, anything? I'll be able to give you lines to some of these things, okay? Cause they're all interconnected, yeah.
Could you, uh, I know you went over before, but you could go ahead with a lot of budgets, the Boys and Girls Club funding is coming, so.
We, we don't pay anything.
So they, they just.
They are, what we're doing is, uh, it's a contract where we actually, uh, have a joint use agreement in terms of facilities. So they are using our buildings, they're gonna be using our maintenance crew, our electricity, and in kind, they will be funding the staffing. Um, and what we, uh, and then for our students who cannot afford to pay, they actually have, uh, uh, system, right? Through the state system one way, and then also scholarships to support students in there, but it's zero cost to us. And then you'll see down the road, when we're looking at all the costs we spend related to all the other after-school programming, so zero to us. Yeah, we definitely, believe me, Scott asked them five times, this is zero cost to us, right? Like, I think, I think it's important for people to know that we really, uh, we're trying to, my, our goal was, through all of this, is to figure out how do we provide life services to our families and students, but at a lower cost to the district, but the same level of quality service to kids.
That, that's, they didn't have the same arrangement over at the heart of rec in, uh, C-Tech, so that's why I was, I'm curious. Does the city of Taquilla increase or decrease, eh, the cost of its services?
So we will be paying, so what we offer, City of Taquilla specifically, is their academic, um, clubs. So that is gonna be at a cost to us, but we can use title funds for that, and we will see in a later slide what we're paying for that. But even then, you will see it is substantially less than we paid for all of the other after-school programming. And then what we work very intentionally with, with the City of Taquilla, who've never done this before, they're coming to us. So they're gonna be housed in our schools, in the past, we've had to go to their facility, and one of the things we said is we, our kids need to be in our schools, just we can transportate all of that, safety, all of it, and, cause we don't have the money to transport the kids. And so they work with us, we've been talking to them since December as well, and they've been working with us, and so we're finalizing all of those plans as well. And that'll launch in the fall, so, yeah, yeah. So these are all the things behind the scenes that we've been working on all year to get ready for, to launch this year. So really excited about this work, um, really excited, everyone's excited, um, but we also recognize implementation, you know, you were project manager. Implementation, it, there is the, it has it, right, proof is in the pudding, and I recognize that too. So, um, but yeah, but I wanted to share, we have a lot of work to do, and so we've got work to do, and so this is where we're gonna be focusing our energy on for students, so.
So, yeah, one other comment in the voice, I mean, I follow, uh, we've done a lot of after-school trends over the years in the district, and. the college, uh, we've done a lot of after-school programs over the years in this district, and, you know, that you, you mentioned, I have my questions about the academic side of it, and which has always been a challenge. We've had a few programs that were pretty successful in pushing and helping students academically, but, they tended to be ones that were staffed by our staff, meaning typically parent, say, I think that's they know the students. So, one of, I think one of the challenges, and I don't know exactly how the, the City of Taquilla program's gonna be set up and just staffing it academically, but that could be one of the challenges, is how to, you know, have an effective, and I was gonna say implementation, how to have an effective academic program. I'm concerned the boys and girls, but we'll take care of the other non-academic stuff, which is great, but, but we need some academic implementation in there that's gonna be effective, and how that works out, it's gonna be.
I will say too, that, um, while, yeah, that's not enforcing those, that's mainly focus, they do have, um, built-in time where they focus on homework. And I think the more strong alignment there is between the club, and the school building, the teachers, the more connection and access they have, um, the more that we, some of the students stay within that individual homework time. Um, so, yeah, well, it's not specifically academic focus, there are ways that I think, if we're encouraging that strong partnership, we don't need into that and be able to support that students.
Yeah, well, I, yeah, and that, and that's why, and that's why I think it's really important that, so people be able to see the through lines. We have to be, uh, and I'm not gonna use the word simple, but we have to be succinct. And we have to have coherence. When we do too many things, it's, it's hard for families. I know as a parent, when I was a parent, students, schools offer like too many things. I need to make free choice, sort of, right? As a parent, you know, I was working mom. Um, so I just feel like, these things have to be, uh, nested within each other. The MTSS nests with distorted practices, universal design, that's with distorted practice, it's all nested. Boys and Girls Club, for example, has already a partnership with Special Olympics. So that's, and they're excited because they have a partnership with City of Taquilla. So all of these things will help us, be better in coherence and coordination. And I just believe that, um, uh, it doesn't have to be so complex, and it doesn't have to be so many things, right? We have to be succinct in what we're doing, and it has to be manageable by the schools and the students and the teachers. So, we're hoping that that is, the, 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 the ability to understand it all together and how it nests together and, and aligns, I think will be better for kids too. So, all right, um, no more questions? Then I'll go to the next. And I'm just putting this slide up here, this is the timeline we shared, um, it's, you know, we're past it, but I just wanted to let everyone know. Um, this is the HR timeline, uh, for the staff reductions that we've been publishing. Uh, these were challenging conversations, and, uh, we keep in mind that these timelines are our, our agreement, uh, between, uh, Taquilla School District and our union partnerships. Um, and that we recognize that there's always a human element to this. And I think we tried really hard to center that. But, you know, uh, what we learned through this process is, it's a process, right? And everyone has to go through it in their own way. Um, but we really tried hard to stick to our timelines. We tried hard to, um, give to people time and, um, and have meaningful conversations. And, um, and I actually did receive some nice emails from folks, um, about it. And, but, you know, not everyone, uh, had, it wasn't, it wasn't easy for everybody. So, I just wanna acknowledge that. And that came up in our budget conversations as well. So, um, all right, next slide. All right, this is one of the questions that the board has been asking all of us, especially when we did our presentations with the director. Due to the current financial crisis and stableization planning, how do we commit to the same or higher level of service to students and schools? And so, I'll be, uh, sharing three slides. Uh, and I'm just gonna preface this with a few things, uh, just to let everyone know when it says one point O, F T E, that is a full-time staff person, okay? And I also wanna preface that, that in our small district, if it says one point O, um, that is an identifiable person. But I will say, because we've had so many public comments, and people have, so the purpose of this presentation of the next three slides is, it's related to many of the public comments or the board comments, specifically around program. And I will also add, it is not the whole thirteen point five million, it is a snapshot. It's about seventy percent of that total amount, but it's a snapshot, especially in part of impacts to schools that people are interested in talking about. There is still a lot more staffing that we're going through right now, reductions. And we also have contracts that we're still, um, uh, eliminating through special education as an example. I didn't share any of those, but we've been doing that work. Uh, we also have contracts with Puget Sound ESD, there's other contract work that we're eliminating, staffing reductions. So I'm just letting you know that these are things we're still working through, um, but those are on the docket. Um, but this is a snapshot of the picture, but it's about seventy, it's about seven, over seven million that I'm gonna be addressing. But I did wanna acknowledge that, I apologize, it's the one point, one person is identifiable, but, it was a public comment, so I felt with the purposes of the meeting that we address it here. All right. Right? Okay, next slide, please, yeah. So, I'm not gonna read all these to you all, so people can spend time reading, so I'll just take a few moments. But I just have a couple comments, and then, um, I'll go through, uh, I'll address them and then wait for questions. Um, just, uh, again, this is, uh, I focused here on school program impacts on this slide. Uh, so those are the things that we heard about in public comments and our meetings, um, that, um, HR's been talking through. We've been hearing about Scott as well, in terms of the teaching and learning side of things. Um, these are, so what you have here, I'm gonna explain how the slide set up, the school program impacts. So, those are the specific staffing positions. So, one point F T E is one person, um, ten point, or ten people, just so people understand that F T E, um, number. And then, the mitigation plan is what's going to be happening instead. Um, so for example, I'll just go through the first line, assistant principal. Uh, that will go under the role and responsibility of elementary principal roles and responsibilities. And then, to the right, is the total reduction, and under what funding category it was listed. So V E A is the general fund, as a reminder. Title, it's still B, remember title is still B E A, but I wanna designate it as title, uh, because it is a different funding source, and there's specific parameters that title can fund. And then ESER, which actually, we all remember, goes away at the end of August thirtieth, uh, twenty twenty-four. So I'm gonna let people just take a look for a few minutes, and then I will take questions.
I have a question, can you hold your weight?
Just wait a couple minutes, we've got one minute, yeah, and then we can ask questions, yeah. Just, we'll get, we'll give everyone like a couple minutes to. I'm just figuring out the total, I already added it all up, it's four thou, four million, three hundred and four thousand, five hundred and nine on this page, for the record. Just one more minute, we will have the questions. Okay, questions?
Okay, I'm gonna start with, uh, just a little context, I was looking at the numbers, it turned out, um, the fact that twenty twenty-four, I graduated, sets some records, we've never achieved before. Uh, in particular, uh, with regard to the percentage of students that got college ground scholarship, which is almost two-thirds of our students, and, um, the number of, kind of, the scholarship per dollar per students over forty thousand per time. And just so that people understand, a college ground scholarship is a program that the state had a number of years ago, and provides, um, tuition, full tuition for four years at the rate of whatever University of Washington Seattle is, which is the highest, uh, one in the state, which is about that, 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 a year. So, it's a really, and you can use, you know, have it at University of Washington, you can use it for, you know, a career thing, or a community college, a variety of, of things. And, uh, so it's a really, it's a really, it's always been really important scholarship for our students. And the, um, the thing about it is that you have to fill out the ballot set in order to get it, as with most scholarships. And fortunately, you know, over the years, we have in this district one of the highest, um, ballot completion rates, which is another number I watch all the time, uh, in the state. Uh, generally, the area only Seattle beats us, that's because they have the Seattle scholarship, which guarantees, you know, um, two years of community college, I think, for everybody. But, so, you know, those, those numbers, those stats and numbers don't get that high by accident. They're, they're because, you know, our staff and the college and career staff has, um, worked really hard to make sure that those, uh, the students and the families fill out all those forms. So, the one thing that I wanna make really sure of is that, you know, however we rejigger this, uh, college and career, uh, program, that we make darn sure that those numbers don't go down for us. And so, you know, there's a variety of things they do in the college career, the ballot set is probably the biggest one. I mean, that, that's a key one that unlocks the future for vast majority of our students. The second one is organizing the college visits, and I know there's a variety, because that gets students, you know, connected to, I mean, we go to East Carolina, I don't, a variety of different places. And then, there's also, we have a bunch of local scholarships, I talked to one of them, and there's a bunch of other ones that, that the staff, you know, coordinate to make sure the students can apply for so-and-so. So, that I just wanna make really, really sure that, you know, a lot of these paths that are, uh, are, are not gonna get dropped on the floor. And, you know, I see here that, you know, the counselors are gonna take them up. Um, the question I wanna make sure is, are the counselors all in on this? Are they all in on, on taking up these, these things? Because if they aren't, you know, my experience says, you know, somebody's gonna drop off the floor. So that's, I just had to express that, that concern, and they, you know, um, make, you know, I don't think that there's any response to make sure that, you know, the, the staff that's gonna, uh, have to take this up is, is all in on doing that.
Well, I'll just add a couple things. One is, uh, the counselors give some, um, context, uh, for some of this. Counselors, um, we have four counselors at the high school, uh, which is over the ratio, uh, for the state, very much over, we need, so I'll give a comparison. A like-size, um, high school, but not a like-size high school. Other high schools in our state have seventeen hundred kids in their high school, and they have four counselors. Now, I'm not saying that they don't have the need, that's not what I'm saying. But I just wanted comparison, we have around nine hundred students and four counselors. So, there is, uh, room, uh, within their roles and responsibilities. And that's something that, uh, Principal Parker is working with the team to develop. So that's one area. The other thing I will share is there's other classified positions in that career counseling center. And so, Erin can a, a, address that, I'll let you answer that at the beginning. But the other piece I will share is that Urban League also focuses on, um, their focus on, uh, college and career readiness. And they're gonna be providing an extra staff person to foster high school to support some of this work. So I just wanna share that with you. That's work that I have taught, I, I oversee high school, I'm over the supervisor for foster and children. So I talk to Principal Parker and Principal, uh, Christopher all the time. And so, I did ask about that and shared where we are. So she's very aware of this shift. And then I'll let Erin address, I don't exactly know, there's other specific classified staffs, uh, if you could just answer what are remaining classified staff around the building?
Yeah, so in addition to the counseling, the four, four point O F T E for counseling staff, we also have two staff members that have responsibilities for, um, engaging, re-engaging students. And I think the, the way it looks is that there will be, um, some shifts in the work, because, uh, in addition to, you know, checking in with students on, you know, their, the, the progress that they're making towards, uh, high school completion, and, and their coursework. Um, there will also be opportunity to connect them with resources like, uh, what the counselors are preparing for BACs. And, um, and, and those, those two point O, uh, the classified staff members have them, um, you know, bring, help bring students to the table for those opportunities. And so, I think the, the key is that there's alignment, you know, within the counseling department, and, and that there's inclusion of those two staff members who are, who are very engaged, like, students, you know, with student. But, um, but also making them part of the counseling team. And that's, I think that will be the shift that happens this year. Is that, so we have the four point O certified counselors plus the two point O re-engagement position.
And the additional staff to come to Urban League, or to the community partnership that we, and they're gonna continue, yeah.
And there's year out support as well. You know, we have a cohort at the high school that's wrapping up, but then we also have, like, as, we're looking at that as well as an option.
Yeah, one of the things gonna be keep, keeping that college and career room that we put in there, remodel the high school, keep that room alive, that's what it is today. And it sounds like there's a variety of folks that can help do that.
Yeah.
Because, I know the students are very engaged. Yeah, yeah.
Alternatives, um, to what might be missing, do they equate? If somebody's trying to do their BACs, forms into our level of service, basically, or does it exceed the level of service before, and the configuration used?
Yeah, so the, the specific positions are, it's the re-engagement specialist and reconciliation specialist. And they have very specific tasks in their assignment, as is in, you know, twenty-three, twenty-four school year. And, uh, those are, uh, you know, very specific to making sure that students are on track, or are staying on track for their high school completion. I, the piece that needs to be added is, one, they're gonna be part of the counseling team, but also that they're helping, they're bringing students to, they're making sure that students have it, that they're aware, students and their families are aware of the BACs of it. So, um, it's, and that's, but that's just one aspect that the career and college readiness for, you know.
I just picked that one, so I figured out, I've been to the level of service squad, or down on the whole. It feels like there's a lot of people coming to the fire with buckets and water and whatever you've got. I just wanna know, will it replace the fire hose, should it attract? Fill the way, right?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a shift, right? It's, you know, I think, if we take a step back, I think, we, you know, it's, we're, the, the entire system is doing more with, you know, less resources. And so I think we're looking at alignment, we're looking at inclusion. That's why I think we talked earlier about making sure that the, the entire counseling team, plus reconciliation, plus re-engagement, are, we're being collaborative. Yeah, we don't have, uh, individuals, our teams working inside others.
I, I, I don't have a plus or minus, whether there's some lower search, you know, I worked in state, went through, deep cuts, and we were told, at some point, you can't do more with less. So I get that, I just wanna go with, kind of, what level we got to. It feels like there's a lot of good and bad.
I think some of the key people are remaining, I would say that, some of the key people that are attributed to some of the success are staying in different roles in that state, so I just wanna say that as well.
And I think Urban League are gonna be key, they, they've come in and been a phenomenal job, I think, in a few years. And they wanted to expand, so that's, that the new, that's a plus to be on what's there. The other one that I want to ask, the initiative for, and then I had a, senior that's buying that. So they're a, they're a, um, mentorship group, and that's another plus. Senior that's buying that. So they're a, they're a um, leadership group and that's another plus. So we're, I think we're doing. Community-based organization.
What, what that?
Well, still on this topic, there was, I'm just curious, another other thing. If there's a line in here, so I know one is like, if we're not even on track work that we're trying to do, um, and where that might kind of coincide with. Um, getting the same, you know, high level of service, because you know, we're very important, we're really providing more support. To end graders, whereas before we were kind of, you know, it was more in their tenth, eleventh grade year that we're really kind of getting folks. Having those. Using that type of part of that. Um, and then also like, is there a role for Abbott, um, even in the middle school, uh, to play in supporting this as well?
So Abbott is something that we did not touch. So Abbott funding is remaining. And so we will keep the Abbott program in the middle and the high schools. So that would stay. So that could support.
Yeah, absolutely.
This other college and career. And more intentional, that's, I don't know what's going on. But it's like a thought, but. A little dryness or there. But I will say the other thing is uh, to add to that. The the council piece was critical. We decided to not, uh, even though we could have, we decided not to make that change. One, because of the high need. These are people who've been trained, thank you, in. The high school beyond planning, which is still work we have to do with our strategic plan. Um, the high school beyond plans, there's, there's the graduate readiness on track work. Um. I think that's a lot of learning and, you know, uplifting that has to happen. We felt it was really critical that our counseling team, uh, remaining tech, uh, completely build into that work that we have to do. And then we just have to assess that process as we go. But I will say that Principal Parker, if you look at her school improvement plan, her school improvement plan is aligned. To the district's plan around ninth grade on track. Of course, they have a goal around the high school graduation as well, but. They're working on all the elements on the ninth grade on track that we laid out for them. So I just want to share that with everybody. Thank you. By the way, any other questions on this slide?
I just want to be sure though, that uh, high school, we're in a lot of room that's. Going to stay there, right? I just want to be really clear that that room is going to stay that and used for that focus. I have to agree with. Director Lawrence, that that needs to s- to stay there. And then also, I want to also be sure that when, I mean, I know this is probably more than what we have now, but I want to. For next year, I like to have a name on it. So I need, I I don't want to sit here in the meeting a year from now and say. Okay, how come our FASA forms are less? And everybody points at each other in the room because nobody was given to be in charge of it.
Yeah.
So I need to know, yes, as I hear a lot of. Great things that are there, but I need to know that somebody's responsible for it, they're responsible for bringing the team together, you're keeping the level that we're here. And who the person is. And then I also want, when we have um, being here and they come and report, I want that person to come and report to us. About what's happening as we're going through. Because I think next year, we already have, like, I love this, don't get me wrong, this is great, this is the budget cuts, but I think I can s- In my mind vision, that we're going to have more reports. How are we keeping up with. A high, highest quantity that we can, what we have in the budget crisis and then being more involved in that, because we are dealing now with. We know what the budget structure look like. So now we're going to see, okay, now how are we going to, uh, as a board, I would say, first. We would be looking forward to talking with people, what it looks like now, with now that we know this more. So I just. Every time we have these things, and you may not know it now, but I am, I do expect, I need to know who's going to be in charge of it.
Well, the person who's overseeing all of this would be Principal Parker. She's the principal. And then what she would be doing is working with us and her team. To talk about the roles and responsibilities of this new team. So, but yes, and she actually, just to share, she's had FASAs events in her school. She's intending to have more. She realized she needs to do them often, right? Like all school-wide ones. So it's not just the day-to-day, there's also. The big events that come where we can just have days where we just bring the kids in and just help them fill out their FASAs. And I'll be honest. I had to do that for all my cousins, you know, it's it's a task. It's it's hard to help people navigate all of that. So. I think it's, they just need the technical help and and volunteers really to do that work. So that's something that we can work on, but it'll be Principal Parker. I'll make sure, and so Erin and I, one you and I, be prepared to make sure that we have that. So when she comes back to present um. With her school and her staff, we can make sure that that's something that is addressed.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Anything else on this? I don't have a general question and maybe, I'm sure no way that, you know, makes sense, but um, looking at the the parent educator reductions. Which, how do you determine the right amount of parent educators for any given tool or classroom or?
So I'm going to say something that's not going to be popular. So I've been in education thirty-two years. And we have an exorbitant number of parent educators in our district. Um. Uh, I um. I know this, I have principal colleagues in Everett, who wrapped them on Everett, Better Way. Um, the total number of Eric, I'll just say elementary, and so I'll say, I'll preface this with. They are needed, so that they are needed in their value. Um, what we did not touch was title parent educators. We did not, intentionally did not touch multilingual parent educators. And we intentionally did not um, touch special education parent educators. The number of parent educators averages around sixty in our three elementary school. So that's like twenty. Per, actually, it's even more than that. It's probably twenty-three per school, which is hot, it's a really hot number compared. To most elementary schools. And it's, I will remind everybody here, it's an unfunded thing. Except for titles, special education and multilingual services. So it's not funded. Um, although we did receive like two this year.
Very tiny.
Tiny funding, but it's not a funded word. So what we did is we focused on, to be honest. So we eliminated six from sixty-ish, that's right. So um, which I know it's going to be impactful. But I'm going to say it's something we have to revisit down the future too. So I just want to say that. And so we're very intentional. With the ones that were funded through Facebook. But we were very intentional not to touch. The other parent educators through other funding sources for now, because. I just know, and you have a culture, right? Of you just are used to certain ways of doing things and. Um, and so even the two loss, and there's probably more in other funding sources, by the way, I thought that Amy addressed that, but um. Uh, I would say even two or more, even saying like up to five or whatever, it's still going to feel impactful because. You know, there's plenty of things to do, especially in a high-needs school. So I'm not discounting the high-needs, which is why we. Actually really made sure that we weren't um, totally reducing all of the new things, but we focused on the general education funding. Specifically in this case. But we are, are, if you compare us to other schools, elementary schools, we have a large number of parent educators in our system.
So I just asked, the all the special and parent dangers, do we lose any at all?
No.
There's still a lot of that. Okay, thank you.
No, we, no, we rarely try. So one of the things that we um, were told throughout all of our work this year was to really. Not um, impact special act to the maximum we can. And we also have students with IEPs. So if a parent educator is written into an IEP, we have to honor that. So um. We have to honor it for groups, but we have to honor it like for the state funding, and we also have to honor it for uh, what's written in an IEP. So we were very careful. And uh, what we're not trying to do, because uh, what I will say is we do have a certain number of special education staff. That are paid through contracts. Some of those contracts are higher than what we pay for our own staff. So that's what we're currently doing to minimize those contracts and hire the staff to be our own staff. And it's beneficial to them. They get the benefits, they get other things, but um, but we, in some of these contracts. We pay a lot. So that's one of the things that we're working on. And then we could then only use contracts in an emergency if we have to, but that's something that. Andrea and Erin have been working really hard on uh, all year long. So they're working on that. But we did not reduce significantly. Special education, um, just because of the way IEPs have been written. And we're doing that work right now, but. Um, we did not, um, we did not prioritize that right now.
And the the cost for the. Parent and then IEP also may be reimbursed through the safety net if we're more consistent. Not all of it, right? But a portion.
We're only reimbursed for um, safety net dollars when the cost of an IEP exceeds about forty thousand dollars.
That is.
And we can only allocate staffing in the safety nets if it is in an IEP. So for example, a student has a one-to-one. Adult support throughout their day, then we can submit that for safety net. In excess of the forty thousand outside of that. So there's, there's still a cost to us.
Sure.
But it's above that we can submit.
So the other.
Any other question for comments?
Yes, so the other, the other one I want to clarify about is um, the theater program and. Under the guise of providing available students and learning and um, committed to the same or higher level of service. Uh, we need to figure out how to, so the the theater, um, actual, the secondary school theater programs. That uh, that teachers that we let go. And so. The question uh, becomes how do we, uh, I mean, we heard this from students that they're, they want important, and we saw. Some great productions this year from from the theater group. And so, how do we, how do we keep that? And. So there's, I was thinking, um, this is where we kind of, I, what I'm looking for is, are we committed as a district to keep that program alive and going? And. A couple of thoughts that I had on it was, you know, when we look at, there's kind of, well, there's potentially a couple, I mean, you need a. Uh, an excellent adult and and in charge of the program. Now, we could potentially find some other person in our current staff that has that, I don't know, that that's um. Could there be anybody that has that skill level? Um, the other model, which is really interesting, I was thinking about, so we have a model that are elementary schools, um. That uh, is named the classroom where we partnered with, uh, in this case, Seattle Theater of S T G, and they provide a. Uh, Disney person to, and and then that we, they collaborate with one of the teachers, which happened at, uh, I can't see you last year, and this happened, it took a little bit to record. And they, and you know, we saw that the outcome of that, it was the line being really great, great production and that. And that keeps, that starts our, you know, the other thing that's important about the theater is it's one of those things that you need to develop it at the elementary level and then just keep marketing it up. To be a better, better, same paper band, fire, robotics, everything. So. You know, I would, I don't want to see, you know, a crew cast out of students that have worked at the elementary level to get these skills. I don't want to see the high school program hanging down. So I I'm, I'm going to, so I'm going to commit to, I know somebody at S T G, I'm going to um, contact them to see. Uh, if we could, uh, and I don't know, Katie, maybe somebody if they're too out of, you know, you got S T G.
I'm going to watch people, place will talk.
Okay, so yeah. Um, if if we could find, you know, put the feeler down and find somebody. Who, I mean, established a program and they could come in, we could find somebody that would be an interesting party. You kind of need both because. You know, this is one of those programs that needs a little recruiting. And so somebody in the school needs to do. Why, this student has really a good sounding voice, let's see if we can recruit them, or this person, their parent is whatever. And so. Anyway, that that combination, I think, could work if we found the right, right people. So. I just want us to to commit to.
Yeah.
As an organization.
Yeah.
Let's go and get something before the next school year. And this, because if it died for a year, it's going to be really hard to get back.
So, I think we are committed, so.
Nor, nor are you a hell of understanding what things cost, the director, you know, the theater time. But you'll have to figure out what things cost. A, you know, the speech national resources, but B, you've got to maybe get some sponsorship.
And the other thing is to, you know, if we go through, what are we asking for? I think I, the feeler I'm going to put out, at least initially is. Do you have, you know, somebody that could kind of emulate this Disney and the schools uh, thing where we, somebody could come in. You know, be the technical, ex-professional, he's over it, in an after-school program. Now, you know, and then we can see what's, see what's out there. I mean, I have no idea. You know, what they have, but we just ask the question. I mean, the other place I'm going to go is support culture, which is the King County uh, art group, which is. There is a King County Institute, I think this last year, a one of them sort of, one ten to one percent sales tax for the arts. And so part of that is schools. And so I'm going to see if they have anything going there. So. Anyway, yeah, that's, that's, I just wanted to make sure that we, because we have a great group of students that are, you know, want to come up. They're sophomores and juniors and they want to keep going. So we need to provide that service, so.
Yeah, and I just want to highlight, so let's say on the bottom line, multilingual parent educators, those were through ESSER. Those are funding we committed through ESSER. So I just wanted to share that. Um, and so we currently have M L L staff that are currently in alignment, and we're going to be making sure. That all of our funding is through the alignment. But I wanted, even though we talked about that, those were ESSER-funded positions that were added after. The fact. So I just wanted to clarify that for the, for anyone listening.
Uh, just working on the one other thing, going back to the theater discussion, um, thanks for offering those suggestions. I think that's a great way to um. Prevent us having to like completely, you know, put a theater on hold while also supporting this system. Um, I I know another few things that came up at the listening session is that I just kind of wanted to think about that. And this probably isn't a thing that we can do for this year. But, you know, looking at how we continue to like, build sustainable systems long-term. But I think there's so much that we could explore around C T E.
Yeah.
Um, uh, knowing how much of like the technical aspect there is related to like theater. Um, and so maybe that's just something we can look at, and what does it represent, actually have a class under C T E. For next year, and that person, that staff also then supports the theater theater, uh, uh, the production themselves. Um, so I, you know, I mean, I like this idea of how we use external folks to help support us through this year, and then what does it look like to have a little bit more of a sustainable?
Yeah. Yeah, we talked about that, it's like the interdisciplinary aspect of, for example, the, what we were sharing with the student group. They were talking about the technical aspect, equipment, all of that. That is all C T E work, right? The audio equipment, audio recording, all of that. So. We talked, that is something that we could do to look at, um, the uh, interdisciplinary type of class to support that type of work. So, yeah, that's a good feature in my.
And you can, or should, once they get, uh, maybe, uh, I mean, in council, but instead of, once we get students that are skilled in those systems. They can work out in small projects, but also community projects. And, you know, because we rent out that place frequently and so, anyway.
And then I just want to offer, I'm a member of local community, which is professional staging. If you get serious in that direction on C T E. I see no problem talking to my youth union about bringing in professionals to train them.
Yeah.
Where we like them to be when they come out of school, they're going to go to union. So, there's a real positive combination of that.
Yeah, this is great. This is why we talk about this stuff. All right.
So, I see that we have the ESSER funds up there, we have one point five million dollars. What I don't understand is this chart is. We have, I know that ESSER is going to go away anyways. So when we look at the budget of the four point three that we're reducing. That is that when we, uh, help me understand here that the four point three is is a reduction that included the loss of the ESSER funds? And so what, what was our, our gap at that point? If it's not, because when I think of B E A funds, that's kind of our, that is our.
Yeah, that's right.
Brand pop-up, right? So I'm, I'm a little lost in um, what. What we're really reducing? And I know we were already going to lose some anyways, and then trying to figure, and figure out really where are we? With our budget, because it's, it's a little convoluted there, especially with such a large number.
Yeah, so what we can do, this is just a precursor to, so we're going to have another budget presentation coming up, and then. Amy's planning on presenting the twenty-four, twenty-five budget by July, correct? Is that correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So this, this is just a precursor to that, but this is the um. But I'm just following up on the mitigation requests. And so, but yeah, and there's more slides, there's more money here, so.
Yeah, that is, this is cool.
Yeah, I want to, but I just want to understand the reduction. So we're saying four point three, our current.
Yeah.
That's it, is this amount, so then I want to.
The ESSER doesn't count for that.
And I'm trying to, I'm trying to figure out exactly the numbers that works on.
So when you, so again, you have a new set of work through, did that include these ESSER dollars? Yeah, in which case then it's not technically a reduction to our uh, B E A, but it is a reduction to our entire system, yeah.
Yeah, I'm listening, I'm, I'm just sharing the total reduction on this page in my sharing. I could have broken it down more, so. I can send that to you all in a, with the, with, on Monday with the breakdown uh, on the sheets, but just also remind me.
But just also reminding, for those of you who, so I'll just sit here and say those who arrived a little later. This is not all the thirteen million dollar reductions, this is a snapshot of the reduction. So I'm just sharing, and what the request was, what's the mitigation plan? So that's the focus. I put the amount in there just so people know how much all of the money's, where it's coming from. And even so, for example, when it says, when you see there, it says a hundred and seven hundred and twelve thousand, I'm looking under uh elementary school intervention specialist. Um, there's uh what part of that is title, which is actually B E A actually, and then what part of that is ESSER? So Amy has all of that broken down. I just wanted to make sure that we have many positions that are split funded in our system. And so I just wanted to make sure that that was accounted for. Um, and Amy, has something to add?
Point of clarification, but in response to Erica Simpson's question. So we did have a lens on the fact that if the district didn't make these cuts to the ESSER positions, then it would be that.
Yeah.
It wouldn't have the basic education line. So it is, it is a reduction to basic education. It, it's just, it, it.
I just wanna know what's next, Drew, I just wanna know what, I, I appreciate you bringing the numbers. I just, a point of clarification for me is I wanna understand what budget we're going, or what was right after. You know what I mean, what's, what's the mark, so.
The mark is thirteen point five.
Okay, so.
That's the total.
With ESSER? Okay.
Aaron says, if we didn't reduce an ESSER, it would go to the basic education, which would have reduced the four point three amount. And which I have not, not been denying, denying some of that.
So that, that, then that draws me to my next question, thank you for that, is if we're losing ESSER funding, that's going to be there. And we know that it's going to roll over into our B E A funding or into our, our general fund, are we preparing for that?
Yes.
Okay, and as far as A I has, we've been delivering, maybe that'll be on the slide before, at the presentation. So I, for me, it's just, I, it's.
Yeah.
I just wanna make sure I'm, I'm understanding.
So what we also, let me just, I'll just take this for the record for every journey. We are, when we met in December, we, the team, directed from the state, so November, binding conditions zero. The task was thirteen point five million dollars. Of that, five point six million ESSER funding that we had to eliminate, and then the rest were B E A. So in the math of that, that's around uh the three point five million from, you know, uh, we got five point six from, you can help me with the math, you know what? Yeah, eight point, so we are working towards eight, over eight million dollars of cuts under B E A. And then reminder to everybody, because there was some questions around, well, I'm titled and I'm this and I'm that. And then we've talked about this in the past. If, for example, we said that this social worker, so you see that here, social workers is an example, that's a prime example, right? We kept elementary social workers. So we take that social workers out of, and there's a total of a daily, what, how many? Five social workers that were funded through ESSER. We said, no, we're gonna keep elementary social workers, because that, the community and the teachers and the union and on and on and on. And principals said that was high value. So as an example, that, so that, so when we took, eliminated that eight hundred and twenty-four um, uh, eight hundred and twenty-four thousand, right? Because we got rid of the other social workers, right? We had to move that out of ESSER, but to be honest, then we had to bump something else, right? So that's the tricky part, right? Or, for example, I'll give another example on the next slide. Um, somebody said, you know, well, what about C T E, right, C T E? Well, um, we can pay, so one of the things we learned, which we did not do in the past. C T E can also pay for, help pay for our principal and assistant principal in high school. They actually can fund that. But that means we have to pay for that from somewhere, which is why we eliminated that one central office position. And so to pay and help fund those pieces and also support other areas as well. So it's not, um, it's, we have all these buckets of money. So we actually, so, but what I wanted to do is show, because everyone was, so I wanted to just be really succinct. These are the school program impacts that we were hearing about in board meetings, that we were hearing about, and just really clear. I gave a total amount of four point three oh four million dollars. Um, I'm gonna share about seven million, but we have cut thirteen point five million dollars. And what we're going to be doing is after all of this work, is we're gonna sit down and look at this, because some of them got recalled. And some of us, we're just gonna make sure, did we, were we, did we do our due diligence on this? Yeah, it's a big test and we have to move some funds around, right? Because title is part of that, but it's also gonna be titled, but people think I'm saying because I'm titled. Well, if I have to move a community liaison, I have to pay it out of title. If we say that is value and that was for an ESSER, I've gotta move it and that bump something else. So I'm just saying, it's not, it's not, um, worse, where when people say, well, just bring this back. If we're saying bring it back, then I have to cut something else. That's where we're at. That's where we're at. So when we ask to bring back something, I have to take something else out. And so when we sat down and looked at this, we looked at all the funding sources, how everybody was paying, title, lab, special ed. Um, right, everything, every variable, ESSER, and then the baseline tech levy, C T E levy, all of it. And then we had to say as a district, what can we maintain? Because thirteen million is a lot of people. So what can we maintain to provide service to our kids? And it means some of it's reduced. And so we had to make some big, but this is where we're at. And you say, if somebody says to me, no, I insist this one comes back, then I have to go back to the drawing board and figure out what's gonna go, the equivalent out. That's where we're at as a system.
And I think that's a part of the intent of this, you know, time was as well, is to say, you know what? If this is something we're looking at, how are we gonna help support it staying, right? So like the theater examples, um, Dr. Larson said, this is what I'm gonna do to go uh reach out and figure out how we can maintain these things. So I think the question, or the, the, the discussions that we're having here is not, we need this, how are you gonna do it, right? It's, we need this, how are we gonna do it?
What's new resource?
Exactly, exactly.
Can I consider ESSER, I don't know, say this wrong, but I, you're doing the cuts from this year's budget, which makes it thirteen point, whatever it is, it's a lot. Um, I consider ESSER an offset, it came in at the time, it's going out at the time of money, right?
Yeah, easily you can say that, however, uh, it will uh fund a lot of staff.
Okay.
And as soon as you fund staff and that expectation with some of these staffing positions that are a little test or, uh, we're ongoing staff.
So it psychologically becomes real money, of course, it's better.
Especially when you're talking about socially moving, yeah, that somebody's staffing, that are on the, the positions become very well at their. So then you have, okay, then what's your offsets in order to get them moved? And, you know, it's, because it's like a big puzzle.
Maybe we'll let cons get through her PowerPoint pitch, but next year is it gonna be thinner? Because we don't have the ESSER cuts and we may still be tightening.
Well, we, we will have to get to the second part of the binding conditions and get back up to the uh one percent.
Which is about, we figured out two point five million, hopefully not overgrind, but will it be tough? Yes.
We're gonna get out of this without the most.
Your skill is.
Cuts and bruises we hate.
When you see that third slide, which is all the community grants and removing all the contracts, and a lot of this was saved through some of the contracts. But it's still, it's gonna be people, I mean, it's, it's, and whenever you cut people, it's, it's brutal.
And I think this will be the other part, moving part, how grim it may be is dependent on enrollment and.
Yeah, yes, yeah, yeah, so that, that'll depend on that. And also if we can get additional funding sources, right? So uh, I wanna make sure that on this slide, is there anything else? Again, Amy, you heard that they want to hear some more information specifically around, so when you do your presentation, maybe we can make sure that we have those pieces and kinds of cuts. All right, so that'll be coming up, okay. Um, next slide. Okay, these were district wide, so I focused on the last slide on school-wide impacts, a lot of the things we heard in public comments or emails or, or things. These are district-wide impacts, these were also heard, but some of them were a little earlier. So I'm just gonna stop again, like I did last time, you can look at the slides. And then any comment you have, and I wanna make sure that you noted there, I did put in Abbott in here, but it was commented a lot. We made no cut to Abbott, so I just wanna put that in there just to note for the record. The total amount for all of this is two point two mil, two million, two hundred and sixty-one thousand, seven hundred and forty-three, just for this slide. So just so you know the total amount on that. So this one's two million, two hundred and sixty-one thousand, seven hundred and forty-three. Yeah, and the last one was um also repeated for people who just entered. The last slide was four million, three hundred and four thousand, five hundred and nine.
So a question, uh, this will, and in the meeting today, is there any chance to put a bottom row, and she's wanting to just.
Huh?
Is there a chance to put a bottom, if you can stay able to put that?
I can, I can, I just wanted to make sure that we had that discussion, maybe we can do that with a future presentation. Okay, so um.
Uh, I want to, to be specific, sorry, I'm okay with ESSER voting, Sam, so. Could it be that this desk gives that whole set of model things?
I will add it, I will add it and read, read some of it, so can I, I just wanna make sure people.
I, you know, I wanna, I just wanna say that I appreciate you how you put the mitigation plan in there, it definitely helps. And I think if, uh, if, if you could also, when they come, when they come to present, that's very helpful information. So if the, going forward, if this is the way we can kind of direct the, them as they're presenting of how they're going to.
Yeah.
Their suggestion would be great, because this is very clearer and it's easier for me to go, yeah.
Well, I wanted to make sure that, I just wanted to make sure people knew that we were not just randomly making cuts, that we were. And I, and I'll be honest, like, um, we also have to assess, you know, there's, there's intention and there's impact, and we recognize that. We may have good intentions, we may work very closely with the principals on many of this and staff and our union partners. And we still may, on one of these, we may get it wrong, so I, I will be honest about that. But I wanna just let you know, and we will force correct along the way. If we have to bring something that we're already talking about one position right now, we might need to bring back, right? Like, we're talking about that. And so we have to assess, do we have the money, what, how it has to go instead? So we're actually having that conversation around one position that we're talking about, and we're gonna, you know, we're gonna continue that conversation. So I will stop for one minute, let people just read and pick something that they think, something they wanna address. And then we won't have any talking for a minute, if you can look at this, and then I'll ask questions in a minute. And then just remind people, B E A is general fund, title is also general fund, just so people know what the acronym means. And I'll put that on the slide as well, on each slide too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
How do you think of the, title of the gen, title is categorical?
Well, categorical, but it's under, you know, it's under the general, it's. Yeah.
Okay, so you're using a very broad.
Yeah, we're using a broad definition during this, for, for community.
Okay.
I don't even know more. Yeah. Okay. Any questions?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, so just, just, I'm gonna go back to what I'm always saying, and I'll say it again. So when I see grant for outdoor education, right, focusing, uh, we're gonna see uh elementary athletics pursuing grants, okay? Awesome, who's doing that?
So I will share that that is actually the director of athletics.
Okay.
And we actually have secured a grant already. Uh, and then there's a grant that he's working on, very closely beginning, so I didn't wanna put the names. I, I'll, I'll put the names of the organizations of the grants when we have a signed M O U. Uh, so I'm, I'm being very intentional. Um, so if we have a signed M O U in our, in our hand, signed by the CFO, on the peruse and the entity, I put it up here. Um, if we don't, I put it in there, but so uh we uh, we are in the process of securing a special Olympics grant. That will be in coordination with uh special education and athletics. We just had our meeting and they basically told us we're gonna be getting it, so we're really excited, but uh we're not there yet. So that'll actually support elementary programming in our schools, so we're excited about that. And actually, Dave is working with the director, who did this, is working with the um city of Chippewa, and securing additional funding to support interim nerds. So there we are, so that's, that's, that's that, um.
So that's the piece I'm missing.
Okay.
For me.
Yeah.
Uh, what I wanna know is, I need, like I said, I need the name next to who's responsible.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so if, if, so that was, his name was there, you know, our athletic director, chairs, if his name was there, perfect. Then if I wanted to go back later and ask.
Yeah.
When I get my paperwork, say, okay, that's your chairs, we're ready, this is for the next person. So I need to, that would be very helpful.
Yeah.
You know what I mean, and I think helpful, but maybe it also, also help you guys, you guys don't take on more of what needs to be done, so that there's assigned tasks that are happening.
Yeah, I think a balance to that too, to some degree is like, from our perspective, who's responsible is the superintendent, right? And in this conversion and delegates things. And so I think I just wanna be mindful, and I'm not saying that, you know, not to have them do that, but I, I just wanna be mindful about, um. Uh, yeah, I, I think just, you know, not having, you know, individual staff potentially listed somewhere. We really, it, it, from our perspective and perspective, you know.
But I will say, so on the sake of the record though, I know every person who is responsible for everyone, you know? I can, I can go through every one of them. And I, and I, I spelled out that one, the first one, because, um, and we're gonna be sharing an org chart tomorrow. I'm looking at Joe, Tomacho. So we're sending out an org chart tomorrow, um, but I wanted people to know that there was a plan, right, for that, that we lost that position. And then so just to share, I'll just share it since it's coming out tomorrow, might as well just share it. That, for example, the I T department is going under executive director and human resources, they're adding that on the records, they're reporting them. And they're then working a little bit with, um, with the chief of finance and operations. Uh, we have assessments, report to the chief academic officer. And then C T E is gonna be reporting to the new uh director of uh uh Q twelve education, so that works in a job. So we divvied it all up, and I just wanted to share for the record, that's what's happening. And that'll be out in public tomorrow. And then also the assistant principal that's gonna be hired at Foster High School will also be the point person for C T E, so get on that committee. And maybe, and that's gonna be a link to uh the key, the director of people in the district. So that's an example of a plan that we made to support a decision that was made. And so there's a point person for each one of those pieces. And so I, I know who they all are, so um, but I do, I can send that in a memo uh to the board. But I just wanna let you know that I do know who all the point people of every piece of this, of this plan.
So I think I also have, we've asked for exactly the, the org chart and the, uh, connected to Director Simpson's thing. I think, the kind of the board, we wanna make sure that uh somebody is responsible. I mean, it's completely your job to say who's responsible, but we wanna make sure that there is someone responsible for it. And that, and that's part of the org chart, what I request, I got somebody in the community wants to see an org chart. And who's, you know, what's responsible, what programs are, so.
From my, from my role, I wanna support the fact, our job is to oversee this superintendent. Her job, I don't wanna never micromanage her, but we're working with the public, our two things. We can see the cuts are happening, how are you gonna fill the gaps? And they're answering the two ways. Tonight, I'm just wanting to see the mitigations being articulated.
Yeah.
And then later, when there's an org chart produced for us, that's two or several, that'll answer more questions than us. And then here, you say you have a strategy, you have it all, I think, gives me some relief. We just are answering the people in public who are asking for that reassurance, that's all, I see, I'm back, I do not want to micromanage.
Yes, and from my perspective, trying again, is. For my career, we, we see overview, analyze, criticize, reports after the course of practice. One of the uh yellow flags for failure is that there's never a timestamp on the abstract idea of how some stuff could get done. And there's never a point person of who's supposed to get it done. And then three months later, six months later, you get a report, I didn't get it done. And usually, the yellow flag was. The yellow flag was, it wasn't a person, it wasn't the big staff, and so as much as everything is.
Yeah.
Part of it is because.
Yeah.
You can't do all this.
Yeah, yeah.
And I don't wanna come back and listen to another three hour report.
Yeah.
On how it didn't get done, because it wasn't set up to get done, and as board of directors. Even if we wanted to help support or use leverage, we have a different communities to put off, we wouldn't know the point person as to call. Um, and you, so there's layers, and yes, you don't wanna air everybody out, that's Bob, that was Mary, that's Steve. Uh, but.
Yeah. Yes.
As transparent as it is important that you have.
Yeah.
A plan of mitigation.
Yeah.
Um. I don't wanna spill anything else out, but we've been in these rooms where. Gaps. And, and proverbial balls have been dropped, and then we look back, well, here's a report that said it was gonna happen, but it didn't get done, and then you can't find any paper trail. Or who was supposed to do it, and what the benchmarks were, that, that, so, so, so yes, there's a balance, but also. If in the plan, the plan, even if it's not abstract and concrete, you know, who's the point person, when are they gonna get started, what's. Their plan to implement your plan, so that we don't have to hear. And we hear all, all these questions.
Yeah.
Uh, and so we want sports, so I, I get it, I just.
Yeah. Yeah.
Unable to just delegate about this, but to hear, to see the mitigation plan, know that, you know, who the point persons are, even as we go on the next shoot, that might be fluid as, as things go. Uh, I just. Just. I know how things get done, and I also know how things don't get done.
Yeah. All right.
Okay, question, uh, family and community liaison, I'd say move forward F P E, so how many are left?
We have four left.
Okay, four left, so.
Yeah, and we are part, I'll just, uh, for full transparency, um, part of the Aria funding for twenty four, twenty five, is in total, but regaining at least one or two of them. Uh, for planning, um, and we've also tried to look at a title fund, but we're kind of looking at that right now, we're not at that phase, and so we're now looking at grant funding. To see if we can bring back more, because, um, I will say, uh, some of those languages are important to us.
Right.
For this twenty four, twenty five school year.
Yeah, and I think, you know, this is kind of a broader, uh, this is a narrative that everybody considers absolutely.
Yes, it is.
And the problem is, it can be very fluid, as we see by, you know, the silent seekers, if we don't necessarily know where they're all coming from. And so I, I, you know, this may be, I, I understand some of this may be a contract issue, but.
Yeah.
How do we, how do we make this program fluid?
Yeah.
So that we, we have the, the staff that we need for the, particularly the newest members, and because those are the ones that we, you know, I know you understand.
Yeah, I think something to add there too, it's, um, and this is not by any means to replace the, um, significance of the community liaison, but. Um, you know, how else can we increase language access services, um, you know, so that when we are maybe operating with just four. Uh, community liaisons, maybe we're contracting out to get, um, some interpreters and translators for, you know, these big community events that Foster has always doing, or the district is doing, so. Even in the meantime, how can we use, and I know that there's, when we got some grant, I think, I don't know, anyway, so that, that's something I'm better get to get off.
That's a state law.
Yeah, that's right, okay, yeah, that has last year, right, or, yeah. Um, if you have any ones for the staffing contracts, um, I'm assuming that's related to what you were talking about earlier, trying to hire more staff, contract less. Does that mean that that number might be a little bit fluid up or down, depending on what we have?
It's where we at right now, right, yeah.
Okay.
And then, um, it, yeah.
Cool, and then. Those, uh, student services contracts, um, can you talk a little bit about that, like, how we're able to lower that?
So that, I'll actually pivot, if you don't mind, Andrea, we might just turn that.
Yeah, so, um. Break them this way, for the purposes of public, um, records, so this is a student who is transitioning from one of our out of district programs back into the district, so. They have successfully met their goals, and we are very excited to, um, have them rejoin their neighborhood community.
So this is specific to a, a student rather than something that we are, yeah, as a district, okay, great, thank you.
That's the goal.
Yeah, that's the goal, people are, yeah.
Yeah. Anything else on this slide? Okay, all right. All right, next slide. And this one is specifically partnership, this, this is a little different, this slide is a little different. That one, I, uh, I quoted it differently, I colored it differently, so I didn't want, the last two slides were program and district impacts, those were reductions. Um, these are, most of these were, um, S R, and so what I did is, um, um, talk about what the plan is for twenty four, twenty five partnerships. So I will say, all, I put instead here what the cost of all of their grants for twenty three, twenty four for this year is, next to the name of the title. And then I put the mitigation plan, uh, so some of them just say non-renewal, right, and then the, so that, because we don't have a plan, because it's just the end of the partnership. And then the impact, what are the twenty four, twenty five dollars we're spending to, to mitigate for these plans, this is a little different. I muted green, because I wanted to make sure that, um, it was a different type of slide, but basically. Many of the funding on the twenty three, twenty four partnerships, almost all, except for an exception of Urban League. But if you notice, almost all of those were S R funded, so those are being eliminated, um, and then what are we doing instead, moving forward, so I'm gonna stop here, let you look at that. And, um, then give you about a minute or so, and then if there's any questions, um, we will, um, talk through those. Those, those partnerships.
And I will say, add this, grants in here that aren't on here as well, but these are the ones that I knew, that we talked about with schools and things, so. For example, the anti-racist one, those other monies that are, we've been funding as well. And this total of this is, I just wrote, no revenue for twenty percent grant is five hundred thousand, total reduction taken without twenty percent grant is one million. Three hundred and thirty nine thousand eight hundred and eighteen. And I added that there are additional contracts with, um, Q D Sound D S D that are not captured here, and that were in the current process of renegotiating, these are the ones that we said. We're done, so.
So a quick question, if I take Stillwater?
Yeah.
Um, they would be doing three thousand plus.
Yes, they were.
That goes away, like, you're still offering up the building usage for free.
Yes.
So they'll stay there, but it's up to them to refine.
Yeah. Yeah, and they've been aware of that for a while, yeah, for a while.
Understanding what.
Yeah, but one of our, because they, their, their plan is to still support our students, and it makes sense. Because it's easier to do that from our own building side, uh, we're gonna give them, uh, a space, so we're in the process of securing what that space looks like. Um, it's not a lot, it's like half of a classroom size, they also wanna do some parent education in that space, so we're working on, I think we're finalizing the M O U this month.
Excellent, so, but we're essentially to them, an in-kind donation of a space.
Yes.
And then the rest is up to them.
The rest is up to them, yeah.
Okay, if they fail, then. They fail, is that how it works?
Well, you wanna add, well, I would say.
I was gonna say they are.
I will say they had funding, they had a different funding source before we gave them this funding. This was, I, I actually think the timing was perfect, actually, for this, because it's COVID related, the pandemic, and now with the silent seekers, so. I think it, but we don't have the money to do that anymore, so, but they've been really fully aware, so I think that's where they're at right now, is looking for. Going back to their old funding sources and working, and also thinking about how they can work with the food banks and things like that, so that's what they're thinking.
They've funded it for the year.
Yeah, and, and I think the point you just made, one of the reasons why we, because I think this happened a year and a half ago, is when we started supporting them. Um, and it was because we knew we had the S R to do it, it was within the realm of what S R would be spent on, and so it was a joint agreement by both of us.
Yeah.
That we would support them in this way, then.
Great.
Yeah.
So what is the B R?
It's a assessment group that was part of the. The work, did I put the, did I spell it wrong?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, B R, sorry, it's B R, sorry, I spelled it wrong, what's that, wow, I totally checked my word. Okay, I can use it a lot. It's the B R group, yeah, it's the B R group, sorry, not the bird group, sorry.
Okay.
Yeah.
The other one I'm curious about, that, that I learned about Mines Matter.
Yeah.
Is they're not on here.
Yeah, we're not, uh, that is.
And they, we did visit them this year.
Yeah, but I, I'm not, I think that is through the school, and that's through Foster High School, it's not through the district partnerships, so that's what I have to look through.
So there's another category of school partnerships? I mean, I see Urban League, I mean.
Yeah.
My mind, Urban League involves a foster.
I had no idea about, I don't think we funded, I think Mine Matters was funded through another entity, do we, we don't have them at the, we haven't funded them yet, so they weren't on our roster. So it'll be interesting to think, have you partnerships like that? Yeah. Well, I would say, like, Boys and Girls Club, that's a handful, that's a partnership, so that's the part that we have to really think about is. How we partner with our community, because I will say, like, I just noticed, one of the members from Stillwater yesterday, one of the board members, and I'm on the board, so this will trans transparency. As, as the superintendent of the full school, as I'm on the board, um, but part of the work with them is, you know, when she came and talked to me. They want space, like, they wanna have a common place to meet with family, right? Or something that they can count on for their volunteers, and I believe if it's in service of our children. We have to be a little flexible, and I, and I know, um, I, I get it, I get it, that we wanna protect our time and our, our union members, and I get all of that, but I also believe. If this is in service to our kids and our family, we just need to figure out and be a little bit more flexible in some of those things, and if we get a service for our kids and family. And I have to give up a space on behalf of a classroom or something, or maybe a little conference room, let's figure it out. So that's what I'm trying to do myself, in terms of some of the partners we're working, and I'm also trying to be really clear with our partners, like, our kids need you in our buildings. Right, like, Boys and Girls Club, City of Tepulac, I know you have a community center, I get that, but I, if I want guaranteed that my kids access your robotics club, I want you in our school. So that's what we're trying to do, is work, be really intentional with what we're trying to do. And also think about flexibility, which is, I think it's harder for some people, but we're working. Well, I'm, I, I'm being really clear that we have to be flexible, so, doesn't always work out that way, but we're trying to. So I have any questions on this slide for the board, it's hard, people, these have been long serving partnerships, I will say, though, we've been talking with them since December. This hasn't been like, it's not like we just started, we've been really talking since December, um, and almost all of them have been, I want to say, really gracious, understanding. And they actually understand that, I mean, they're dealing with this in other districts too, so I'm not saying they're happy, because of course, they, you know. They, they are funded through these types of services, but they've been, uh, they have all expressed a willingness to work with us. When we're ready, so I just wanna share that, that we're not, we are doing this in a, as the most positive way, that we're not burning bridges, we're not burning bridges with our partnership, we know. And we, and we've even, like I said, like to Blon Partners, hey, that's another example, so they did coaching, they did this, they did this, we said, look, this is all we can offer you. We wanna keep our partnership, but we need to focus here, how can we renegotiate this, and they said, okay, let us come with a proposal, and they did, right? Same with, um, Team Reed, we had to do the same thing with Team Reed, so, um, I'm just saying that people were willing to work with us. And like, for example, Stepping Stone, it was out of business, but now we're working with the Desseaux Round, so I'm just saying that, um. Our partnerships have been great, I think they understand, um, eh, we just have to get through this time.
Could you educate me on the lap title, so when I look at the Urban League, I see that the one point four, can you explain to me lap slash panel? And then how are they taking current services, and then getting to the numbers?
Yeah, I'm gonna let Amy pick that one.
Thank you. So part of what we have to balance is not only the, um, loss of S R funds, but we also have to look at the grants. As, as a total, especially if we have any whose cost due to manipulation, um, salary costs, these things, and that nature of. Um, and so we started looking at the grant funding, you know, the best flat, and in some cases, we've still got real small, um, adjustments to some of our grant funding. Um, and so in support of some of the costs that we have that are ongoing, we could not continue supporting, um, or making the, the current level that it's at. Um, and so even though it says title S R, or title C T, title lap, and then it remains title lap, it'll still be paid on the same funding source, it's just because. Uh, we just don't have enough funds to fund that, that will amount, because of those other costs that we've missed.
And the title is petrol money and lap is state money, so are they offsetting the cost difference then, so to, to, to what they're. Yeah, and they are offsetting, some, some of our partnerships, like, for example, Boys and Girls Club, right, they're staffing everything, they've done their own, they have fundraisers, they have their own, and by the way, that's funny, I actually donate to Urban League every month. You do too, but that's where our money's going. So, um, anyway, um, I think that, um, I think, I believe that they're providing extra services that we're lowering, because I think. They wanna stay and work with our school, with people, right, and so they're working with us to offset, we have to double check on what services, but that's what I heard from Latania. So this part, it's also, the Urban League is partially district and school based as well, because they use some of their lap funds to support some of it, and we use ours, so. I will go back and find out from Principal Parker, um, what that is, so we'll just have to clarify that, but that's what the last I heard it where we're at.
I think the reality of like, these organizations, nonprofits, like. Uh, I think it's a good opportunity for them to think about where their funding is coming from, like, you know, think about Blon Partners. Um, they don't have a lot of external funding that comes in, they just charge a school district for their services, and that is their revenue source, right? So where, and, and I know that they're looking at that, right? Um, uh, an- another example of an organization that I know works closer to schools is Space Between, I'm not sure if you've heard of that, um, they do mindfulness, um, in classrooms, and their funding model. Um, has been similar, but I know they're intentionally knowing the impacts that district went to fell across the state, they're intentionally trying to find. Other revenue sources so that they can keep the cost down to, for districts, um, so I, I tend to say, like, I think that's just a.
Yeah.
Uh, like, holistically, uh, a lot of these entities are really having to try to think about how they're gonna do business a little bit differently, because school districts just don't have. The robust funding that maybe people have thought that we have.
And I also say we are high needs districts, so for example, I, so I'll give an example, I have a group that I've been working with for a long time, they're gonna do some work with us. Uh, pro bono, completely free, to support, uh, school leadership development, it's a national organization, they're not, they're gonna be flying here, they're gonna be, come out with their own hotel costs. They're gonna come here in August, but how they're paying for it is we're, they're charging us nothing because of their partnership with me. But they're charging the other districts around, right, so districts have more money, right?
This is about being recorded.
No, no, I, I, what I didn't mention to me, but what I'm saying to you is that, districts that, well, we're a seventy five percent free, it was much different. We should not be paying for those services, if they have the funding source, and districts that actually are ten percent, because we have those around us. And that's still the leadership development, then they'll be doing a sliding, it's like, it's a sliding scale, right, and so just letting you know. But that's what we're trying to do as well, it's like, well, being, I'm being honest with people, saying I can't afford that, and they will, we still wanna work with you, okay. Then let's talk, right, and so we're being really honest with people, as transparent as we are, um, and we're, but we still have work to do. Like, we still have leadership development, we still have the students, we have to pay for things, and, and, and I'm just also letting you know that, um, and we. We are willing to think outside the box with people, and, and that means that we, you know, the sliding scale for us is a little bit different for a couple of years, but then we know that in the two years, maybe we have to. Be more, you know, supportive and robust that we have to mean, then we do that, we honor those relationships, because that's what we're doing, is we're honoring our partnerships, honoring our community. And honoring those relationships, so, um, it's not easy, I'm being honest, that we're, we're trying to, we're trying to still meet family, uh, staff and student needs, that's what we're trying to do. And so we have to be. That's what we're trying to do, and so we have to be creative, and, I mean, we're all, we all talk about free, we like free, but we, you know. But we also, so we, we've scaled back quite a bit, and, um, but some people still wanna work with us, and, and we're figuring that out, so.
By the way, I'm gonna convince the legislature to make flat, the congressional, and scale as well, and maybe a little progress, but anyway, that's a decent.
Yeah, but we are a really highly district, and, and I do think people recognize that, and so, I think, and they know our kids and our staff. We need, we need more, we just need more, anything left on this slide, just to make sure. All right, it's getting close to five P M, so I just wanna do the next slide, really quickly, I think it's just questions, final questions, sort of quickly, if the next slide is, yeah. So I think we've had lots of discussion, um, there's a couple things I just wanna share, uh, I wanna go back to the slide, can we go back to slide together? Cause I think we missed the, the, um, the goals for the, and, uh, go back to the goals. But, yeah, let's go back to the goals first. I go to this one, yeah, so this is, again, our priorities for anti-racist work, we've been sharing this, just remembering. These are our focus areas, and then for our school teams, our district, moving forward, so that'll be our, our focus. Along with our strategic plan, and then go forward, uh, to the next slide with the launching of the next one. And then just reminding everyone, we've got lots of work to do still, right, this is the work we have to do. This is the initiative, we've got frequent implementation, high school's got honors for all in the high school, we've got lots of things we're doing. Um, and then I just wanna put on here, we also have to figure out, cause one of the things I keep hearing when we're downing, right? Literacy, right, literacy adoption, we need to talk about that down the road, so we have to do still things, we have to plan for. So we'll talk about budget cuts, but we also have to continue to do the work, right, and what does that look like to do a literacy adoption? So I just wanna, um, say that we have work to do, I'm leaving it at this slide, because these are what we're focused on for twenty-four, twenty-five and beyond. This is not a one-year thing, it's the next two to three years, um, implementation, and I think it's good work we're gonna do. Um, and it's, we have to, um, really work hard to make sure that we're prioritizing our kids, um, and our staff. And supporting them in some of these, um, in our this transition, so I just wanted to mention the end of here. Um, I'm gonna end my presentation, I wanna thank everyone for their engagement, cause I know we have at five o'clock, uh, another, um, um, work session. All right?
Thank you.
All right, so we'll move to adjourn our meeting. All in favor? Great, let's take a, a five minute break, um, at this time, we'll need everyone to clear the room, except for those that are staying in their session, um, and we'll clear.